And. Thank you. And let's see, why don't we do a roll call vote for the trustees? So that we are all aware of who's here on Zoom and for our recording. So I will say Deborah Koval, I'm present. Karen?
Karen Freed, I'm present.
And Janet?
Can you?
Yep. I am Janet Crupp. I am present and there's no one in the room with me.
I forgot to say that. I also have no one here because even though it's a public meeting, we do say that to let everybody know. So Heaney?
I'm so Heaney. I'm here present and no one is in the room.
Thank you. Mike?
I'm Mike Trun. Yeah, no one's in the room with me.
Yeah, we just say it because with the Zoom, you know, people aren't sure what's going on. So awesome. Okay, before we get started, I did want to see if we could have a motion to accept the agenda. The new agenda does have the non-public session on it. So we don't need to make a motion to include that. But. Okay, I will make a motion to accept the agenda for this meeting. Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Soheaney. Roll call vote. I will say yes. Janet?
Yes.
Thank you. Soheaney?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, we'll say the pledge. So. If we could stand, Eva has her flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So we have our beginning, the beginning of our meeting is beginning with an appointment to celebrate a staff anniversary. We had, I saw that Sheila was here, but I don't see her now. Did she leave the meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, that's you, Sheila?
Maybe that is me, I guess.
Yes, that is. Okay, good, good. I saw your name was up before. So Sheila has been with the library for 15 years. And I thought a lot about what I would want to say about the wonderful Sheila. So I want to say Sheila, you are, you are the definition of what it means to have the library as a community center. You bring so much kindness and grace to everything you do at the library and that people really feel seen and known when they come in because of your warmth and your just customer service doesn't do it justice, the way that you greet people, the way that you treat everybody with so much respect, and it just makes a real difference. So we miss seeing you on the circulation desk, but appreciate all that you're doing in technical services, and it's always such a joy to see you there. So I want to thank you for your 15 years of service and really, it's our, it's been our pleasure to have you there. So that's what I wanted to say about the wonderful Sheila. Does anybody else, would anybody else like to say anything? Karen, please?
To kind of echo what you just said, when I have people approach me and talk about the library staff, Sheila's name frequently comes up as being friendly and helpful and a really good role of what a library staff person should be. So I too want to say happy anniversary.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Anyone else like to say anything? Sheila, would you like to say anything? I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
I'm sorry that you, can you see me? And I'm sorry, I did have to switch modes.
No, we can't see you right now, but it's okay. We can hear you.
It's been a joy for me to be at the library, to serve my, my, my fellow Mary Mac patrons. It's. Well, I guess I really fell on the spot here. I'm sorry.
No!
It's, it's been absolutely a joy. I work with people who are delighted to be there, who put as much effort and kindness and attention to the kinds of service that I enjoy and that I hope that as you've inferred, that I am giving to our patrons as well. Trusted. Also a member of the community. Oh dear.
I think that's the storm. The storm is coming through.
Yeah.
And I'm delighted to be a part of this group of people. So thank you for the recognition. It's been my pleasure.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And you are welcome to stay on or you can go and enjoy your evening without watching. Oh, Eva, I'm sorry, Eva would like to say something. Don't leave yet, Eva.
I just wanted to make sure you all knew that Sheila is now on this plaque. We have employee plaques in the lower hallway. They're hanging by the elevator. And this is one that says Mary Mac Public Library in recognition and appreciation of 15 years of service. So these plaques are in increments of five years and now she is on 15 year plaque. I don't, I don't know Sheila, if you had an opportunity to go down there and see it.
I hadn't noticed.
Well, I'm glad I'm showing it to you then. There you are. I'll put it back. I'll hang it back up.
We have a gift card for you for your wonderful years of service towards the library.
Thank you. Thank you on behalf of all of the trustees. That's so generous and totally unexpected. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for joining us, Sheila.
Before I, before I go, may I thank you all for the efforts that you do on behalf of the library. That is such a benefit to the whole community. I am most grateful for your time and energy that you devote to this position as trustee. So thank you.
You're very welcome. Our pleasure.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, Sheila. Wonderful. Okay, well, we can just end now. So it's so positive and happy. Okay, but we do have other business to get to. So under old business, the first item is April's action items, which I have in front of me. Janet, your name is here a lot. So Janet Crupp will move the Watson money from DCU to Fidelity.
I did not do that.
Okay. Janet will release the money from the Quimby Memorial Savings to the trustees of the trust fund.
I did do that. Yeah, actually, that's part of on my notes. So it's done.
And that you will find out from, oh, I misspelled Chris on there. I will make that change from Chris Christiansen, the proper way to sell the stocks that were given to the library by Dr. Quimby.
I know that too, and.
Will you address that in your report?
Yep.
Perfect. Eva was going to get a quote for the carpet replacement, which I saw some information about that in your director's report, Eva, so we can talk about that. And then the trustees will each complete strengths, weaknesses, opportunities. Do I want to say threats? No, that's not what it is. What is T threats? Why can't I think of what? Threats for the meeting on April 28th, which we never had, and my apologies, I was unavailable and I appreciate your flexibility because that was just impossible for me to do. So we will have to reschedule that. So we can talk about that when we talk about SMP. Okay, so those were our April action items. Anything I missed or that we need to consider? Okay, the next thing was the copier, which is just a placeholder that I don't think that's something we need to address right now. We need to think about that and have a conversation later. Strategic planning, I put down that we would discuss this at our June 5th retreat, unless there's something people would like to discuss now. We'll make a plan for our plan on the 5th. That'll be one of our agenda items.
So we're still going to go with June 5th as the retreat?
I believe so. Does that date, does that date still work for everybody? Mike, I knew you, I know you said you weren't available the first two weeks in June. Does that mean you are not available for the retreat?
I'm looking at my calendar now.
Okay.
So when are we looking for the retreat?
We had a tentative date of Saturday, June 5th.
In the morning.
In the morning. Yeah. So Heaney and I won't be available on the 12th because that's high school graduation, but the 5th.
I think the 5th works out for me.
Okay.
Karen's calendar.
Well, it's, my refrigerator is just like five feet that way, so.
June 19th is Juneteenth. So yeah.
So Mike, does the 5th work for you or is that not going to work?
I'll make it work.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So it'll be in the morning. Would people like to meet in person or would you like to meet via Zoom?
I'd like to meet in person.
Okay, Karen?
Person.
In person.
Even as everybody is vaccinated, I'm a happy camper.
Yeah, I'm vaccinated.
And I am.
Eva, what are your thoughts about us being in the clump room?
Fine.
Okay.
We don't. We don't do things based on who's vaccinated and who's not vaccinated. That's not conversations that we're allowed to have with staff.
Right. Okay. Well, this is, and you don't have to. I have no problem. I wouldn't ask somebody else, but Karen said she is. I am too. I have no problem sharing that just for people.
Well, I just volunteered the information. I'm making it a prerequisite. I'm just stating that I feel more comfortable because I know that most people, not everybody, but most people are, and it would be nice if everybody was, but that's their.
So yes, no one is required to tell us, but I'm, I have no problem sharing that either. So, all right, so the clump room will be our meeting place. Should we say 8:30? Okay, sure. And then that brings us to the meeting with SMP because, which is old business E, because Jason would like us to meet in person. He feels like it would be more productive for us to have a meeting in person and that would be an hour to an hour and a half. So that is, Eva said something we could do in the clump room in the future. Also, the Lowell Room probably would not be available, but do we want to think about meeting with him after the first two weeks in June? Okay. So Mike, when are you going to be available again for a meeting with the architect?
Well, it depends on when everyone else is. If I have at least, you know, two weeks notice, I can move things.
Okay, so how about tomorrow? I will, you know, send out an email and get some information from people about what dates would work for them and then we can sort it out that way. Okay, so we don't waste time going back and forth tonight. Does that work for everybody?
Sure. Okay, so but are we, are we looking at an evening with him?
Did he specify Eva whether you would prefer evening or? Yeah, I would guess probably an evening. I don't mind sending him an email and seeing if he would prefer an evening or a weekend. I can even ask him what days of the week work best for him to, just to kind of cut through some of the different back and forth for the dates. So I can reach out to him tomorrow. That's fine. Okay, so I'll touch base with him and see what would work for us. Just to go back to the retreat, also, I will send you all an email and with some tentative items for our agenda, but I know people have other things they would like to talk about. I think Janet may have even sent me something in the past that I can pull from, but I'll just put it out there, a tentative list, and we'll see what else needs to go on it. Okay? Okay, I think that's everything for old business. Eva, for new business, you said no policies tonight, correct? Okay, then we also, for new business, have the open POs. I don't know if everybody had a chance to go to their mailbox and grab the big sheet of open POs. Was there anything Eva, when I went, there were quite a few still in there. So is there anybody who did not get to do it? Maybe Eva could share her screen if there's something that she wanted to bring to our attention. It looks like all of the POs for 18, 19, and 19, 20 have, you know, have reasons they haven't been spent and things that are, they're being worked on, which is what we had asked. So.
Was, was, were those open POs available electronically too? Because I seem to remember explanations for a whole bunch of POs that are still open that, and saying why they were and when they wouldn't be. And I did not pick up anything.
That's okay. Go ahead, Eva.
Okay.
She's going to share her screen. Yeah.
That's what I saw. I don't know.
Can you see my screen now?
Yes.
Okay, so this is on legal size paper. That's why I printed out copies. So it'll be easier for you to look at. Um. I. I think the expectation on our end was that you would look at it ahead of time and then bring questions to this meeting. What usually happens in the town is. Well, it's the end of May, so starting around now, the end of May through the middle of June, the finance director, who's now tumble and will send out a list of open POs still on the town's books to all of the department heads in town. So that means he'll send something to me, he'll send to the police chief and Public Works and so on. So we, you know, we track money from the municipal budget that we've encumbered for purchases of, you know, of various things. And you'll see here, you know, some of it is materials. This is the desk. So we encumber the money, we find out a quote from vendors, choose one, encumber the money, and then it's set aside for when the project needs to be paid for. The desk is ordered, just to kind of fill, fill in the blanks here. The desk is ordered and it might be two months before it's delivered, you know, but we have the money in reserve. And so if, if these funds, you know, which are 2021, like 2021 funds. Or at least the PO was requested here. This was something that we had requested some funds and then you voted, I believe, to move additional money a couple of months ago at another meeting, to move additional money from one line to another line to connect with previously encumbered money for this. But the point is now that it's encumbered in a PO, we can pay for it, even if it's past June 30th and we're in the next fiscal year. This is still a project that's connected to this, to this year. Yeah, I don't, I don't know what you might have question about. This is SMP here, Sherma Crystal Paulson. This is what we are paying SMP for the meetings and various work they're doing for us. And we're just paying that down as we go. Materials, we're always encumbering money for materials, something here, you know, trying to keep this open for next year, would like to roll this over, over to next year. So these are some of the things that we would like some direction from you. Here's the granite steps. This project is still not completed and we have a quote from earlier. So we're gonna go back to the vendor and see, you know, if there's any changes on this quote. Verbal Judo, we're actually going to close the library on June 3rd so that all of the staff can attend in-person training from a verbal Judo trainer named Robert Doherty. Mr. Doherty is a former police officer. He's coming from Maine and verbal judo is a type of interaction that you can have with customers and people so that you can use your words instead of a physical confrontation to get them to comply. This is a style of negotiating that's used by police officers a lot. And because the library, libraries work with the public and some situations can get very heated, then this training has been adapted for you specifically with library staff. I've gone to this training before, a couple years ago in Massachusetts. It was wonderful. And I, I think, you know, I, this is an older PO because we've been trying to schedule this with a trainer and COVID shut everything down and then kind of put a wrench in our works. But. Yeah, so I don't know. If you have questions, we still have June meeting, you know, I suppose if you wanted to talk about this at the retreat, you could do that too. Any, any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
On the first row, it says that the amount was 4,000 Midwest tip, the first row.
Yeah.
First, second means the second row. And then it shows remaining 4,000. And so it will be remaining 1,000 after the 3,000 is paid out. If the status is showing 3,000 due to be paid on 5/14. So. Will that be 1,000 remaining because 5/14 has passed?
Sure, then we would close this. Sure. I, I mean, this is the update, this is the date of the latest purchase order. And then, you know, I would have sent this packet to you probably around the 13th or 14th because your meeting would have been on the 18th. So you would have gotten your packets ahead of time and that's why this date is like this and this date has passed. So any, anytime we pay something from a PO and it might be, there might be some leftover, like you're saying this $1,000 is leftover, that just goes back into our general fund.
Thank you, Eva. I just, if anybody remembers the open PO lists that we looked at four or five months ago, this is just great. There were some open POs from like, I think, 17, 18, and we were able to spend that down and move money around. And I think this is, you know, kind of where we want to be right now. I don't know, and maybe Janet, you can speak to this, if they really need our feedback on whether things can roll over. I mean, I think that's kind of what happens, right? That you roll it over and use it next year. I don't know that I have any strong feelings about managing that. If, I mean, Max knows what he needs for Canopy. So.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any, I don't have any strong feelings about it until, I will have stronger feelings if, like, basically everything on the second page isn't spent a year from now, but right now I don't have any issues.
Yeah.
I do have a question though, on which line? It's one, two, the fifth one down, it's office equipment for 5,000. It says using this to pay invoices, we could probably close this as we seem to. And what's the left, rest of that?
Oh.
It's on the first page. Third from the bottom.
This?
Yes.
Oh, I, I guess she didn't finish the sentence, but so this, we had encumbered money last year, at the end of last year, knowing that we would need something for preparing the building for reopening, various equipment to maintain social distancing. There was a lot of conversation in, on the Nays list about what kind of barriers, you know, are people going to get for their public desks and stickers and PPE and you name it. We were, we didn't know anything this time last year. So we've used what we've used, you know, and we've used what we've needed. And now it's, you know, paying down for, for this using the credit card so we can buy from different companies and just charge it to a business card. I'm sure her sentence was probably something, as we seem to have finished buying the things we need for social distancing and so forth, because we're, we're talking about stepping out of that. So I'm sure that was the end of her sentence.
Okay. Okay.
Great. Karen, please?
I don't know if, if this is relevant for this particular chart, but I've. We were talking about Canopy fairly recently and I know that when I said, yes, let's go ahead and spend the money, it was when the lockdown was going on and we wanted to provide something more, something different, other than the other things that we had for patrons. So I don't know that we would have subscribed to it if it weren't for the pandemic. So my question is, and I'm jumping a little bit ahead, if we're applying for grant money, is Canopy going to end once there is no more, you know, social distancing or anything like that? And is that money that we spent, can that be, could that be spent out of the grant because it was originally intended for COVID mitigation, in this case for patrons? Do, I don't know. Do you understand my question?
I think that's a collection question that the librarians can discuss.
Oh, okay.
You know, right now, the first round of grants, we're, we're not looking at Canopy as an option. So we're looking at other needs that have come up that we don't have funds for.
Okay.
So I think, you know, I would need to go back to Max because he said we'd like to keep this service, you know, this, this, if he wants to keep this open for next year and he would like to keep buying Canopy, you know.
And just to that, to that point, Eva, you know, I'm, I'm sure Max is aware of like, obviously the usage while we were in there and maybe it would just be, while we were having lockdowns and maybe it'll be interesting for the library staff to see what it's like when we're not in that situation. And it could be a service that is popular and worth, they know the staff would like to continue. So it would just be great to hear from him. You know, we extended if he, if it's been really successful, that's just always nice to know. So. Yeah. Okay, great. Is there anything else? Any other questions for Eva? Okay, great. Thank you so much, Eva. Thanks for sharing your screen.
Okay, usually the trustees do vote on this. So if you don't see any real concerns, we'll just kind of move forward. I mean, I can certainly find out more information about Canopy, but.
I don't think that we need that to afford unless I'm, anybody disagrees. So you would just like us to vote that the questions that are in red, that we are okay with that and we will accept the recommendations of the staff to continue with those POs? Is that basically what you would need?
Yes. And of course, as if, if things change on our end, you would still be receiving a recap regularly and be in the loop about how we're seeing things. So, yeah.
Sure. Okay, so I can make a motion that the trustees, I don't know if the proper word would be that the trustees.
Support.
Oh, I love it, Karen. Thank you. Support the staff recommendations on the open PO list. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any discussion or questions about that? Okay, I will vote in favor. Janet?
Yes.
Soheaney?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yeah.
Thank you. And Eva, thank you for bringing that to our attention because it probably is just good for the staff to know that we saw it, that we're okay, and to have it recorded that it should go forward like that and we support it. So thank you. Okay, great. Operating budget, April 2021, general ledger and invoice. Any comments, questions, or concerns for Eva? Any comments, questions, or concerns for Yvette? Okay, seeing none, we will just move on. Um, one thing about the operating budget, Yvette, so that, those were P O's from last year. Are your staff giving some thought to, um, if there's any extra funds left over this year, how they would like to spend those?
That was actually in my director's report with the yellow highlights.
Oh, you know, I didn't, did you, is that the one you just sent out? I'm sorry, I was at the award night and did not have a chance to look at it yet, so.
Congratulations.
Excellence, yes, yeah, it's actually really, okay, so total side note, but so nice to see all these seniors together and to see like senior parents and to have us all gather, even if it was just across a crowded gym with masks on, it's nice to see people. So, okay, uh, anyways, thank you. So, thank you, we'll get to that, I guess, in your director's report then. Okay, um, and look at that, we're at the director's report, so. Okay.
All right, I'm kind of working between a couple of pages myself. Um, so, uh, we've received an anonymous, anonymous donation of a board game, Scrabble, Boston Red Sox edition, and we would like to include this in our collection, Library of Things, and I, I would need a vote from you to accept the donation.
Sure, I will, um, make a motion that we accept the anonymous donation of the board game Scrabble, the Boston Red Sox edition. Is there a second? Thank you, Janet. Okay, any comments or discussions? Okay, I will vote in favor. Janet?
Yes.
Soheeney?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll, I'll let Jen know. Um, uh, we have, also, this was the update, I'm reading off of the Yellow Page. Um, we received a donation of children's picture books and chapter books from Joanna and Paul Langworthy in memorial of their son, Artek Langworthy. Um, this was a request that came in, um, by email several months ago when, um, when the family contacted me and there's been some back and forth for several months and just trying to, you know, I think with everything else going on, uh, communicate with them and, and understand the image that they wanted to put on the book and, um, how that would happen. And they were receiving donations of books from their friends and family. Um, so we finally finished this project. Um, and so we met with, um, Jen and I met with Joanna, she brought over the donated books, um, and we had communicated with her and her husband about, you know, when we have donated items, you know, the board will accept them, um, and then they can go into circulation and that, yes, we could put a stamp, um, for Artek in, in the book and also we can have that, um, his name listed in the catalog. So if you go to our catalog and you actually search his name, you, the book list will come up. Um, and then I had shared it, um, this week on TikTok, I made a little video, um, just, you know, I think, um, you know, it's, it's nice to acknowledge, um, when we receive this kind of donation. I know it's a hard subject, um, when a, a child passes away, um, but it's so, um, we're very honored when families, um, invite us to share someone's memory. Um, so we have them, they're ready to go out and I'd like to have a vote so that you can accept this donation.
Since I don't have that right in front of me, you said their last name was Langworthy, is that correct? And how do you spell their son's name?
A R T E K.
T E K? Thank you. Okay, yes, it, um, that's a lovely, um, donation and I agree with you, it's, and it's such a beautiful thing. Picture books bring so much joy to so many people, so it's such a, a wonderful memorial. So I will, um, make a motion that we accept the donation of picture books from the Langworthy family and it sounds like their friends as well, in memory of their son, Artek.
I'll second.
Thank you, Janet. Uh, any comments or questions? Any discussion? Okay, um, I will vote in favor. Janet?
Yes.
Soheeney?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you, Yvette.
Okay. Um, we have, moving on to personnel, we've received a resignation letter from Nikki Dorfshani. Um, her last day was today. She's, um, going back to school, taking a vacation with her family and then going back to school. Um, so we're sad to see her go because it was really lovely having her on board.
I agree, I really enjoyed seeing her there. So I will make a motion that we accept her resignation with regret, but good for her. She, so, um, do, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Soheeney. Um, any comments or discussion? Okay, I will vote in favor. Janet?
Yes.
Soheeney?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Five zero zero, and next, there's another personnel item, correct?
Yes, um, so we, we would like to promote Alex Jobin from Circulation Page to Circulation Aid. We have, we've had a couple of openings, um, for Circulation Aid and, um, I'd like you to vote to accept the promotion.
Okay. Um, Janet, did you have a question?
Nope, I was just gonna make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept, to promote Alex Jobin from Circulation Page to Circulation Aid.
I second.
Thank you, Soheeney. Um, I will vote in favor. Janet?
Yes.
Soheeney?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and I have, um, P A Rs ready for you, Jen, it's fine.
Okay, if you want to put them in the box, I'll try to come by in the next day or two before I return to work, so.
Okay, and I found all my envelopes.
Oh, yeah, I had asked, I was like, the, the, um, the paperwork was a little overwhelming today. I knew what I was looking for, but I thought, oh, it'd be nice if there was like a little envelope, so thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, it's okay, it's okay.
Let's see, I'm, I usually underline items in the director's report that I want to bring to your attention, and then I have these yellow pieces that are new, um, since, since the 18th. So basically, you know, I really would like to bring your attention to, um, suggestions that we have for the next step in our reopening plan. Um, you know, I'm just gonna go to the yellows and if you, I don't know if everyone has them, I can certainly share my screen if you want, but, um, we, um, we propose beginning June 1st, at least, um, no earlier than June 1st, let's say that. Um, that, um, we would like to eliminate the half hour at the end of the day, which is the 6:30 to 7 o'clock during the week, and then we've got a 4:30 to 5 on Fridays, and then we've got a 12:30 to 1. Um, the staff are finding that, um, they're pretty efficient with closing and wiping down at the end of the day, and there are some things they can just do in the morning. Um, but, you know, patrons would, would rather stay that half hour. Um, so they're, they're comfortable, um, they're comfortable eliminating that. Um, the other thing, and I'll just kind of go over all these and we can discuss as you, as you have questions, but, um, we're also proposing that we stop quarantining materials. Um, the, what we're, what the library community, um, and this is, I, this is national, it might be even international, but the library community has done a lot of, uh, testing and research on various types of surfaces. Um, and they are determining that transmission of COVID is, uh, nominal, if, if, you know, incredibly nominal and unlikely on a surface. And that was something we were really concerned about in the beginning because we didn't know a lot about the, the virus. So we were taking every precaution possible to keep staff and, and our patrons safe, um, which included, you know, wearing gloves while touching materials and taking them from the drop box and putting them in the lower room for 72 hours, um, quarantining things before they went to another library, quarantining things when they returned to a library and so on. Um, so we're comfortable in the science that, uh, no one will be, uh, by touching, uh, surfaces. Um, and, um, the other thing is, you know, the state library would still like to have libraries quarantine items that are moving from library to library on a van, but what we've found is the process of moving items from library to library is basically 72 hours. Um, so we don't need to add the extra 72 hours on either end of the, of the process. We're also comfortable with that with G N O's. Um, so, um, we are okay, we, we can recommend stopping the quarantine. This will, this will mean that it won't appear on the, on the patron's card anymore for those extra days. Um, let's see, the last, the last town hall department meeting in my report was the fifth, but we actually had another one on the 19th. Um, this is the town department heads meeting that we have, uh, with the town manager. Paul McCally says that the mask mandate, um, for the town, for town buildings is still in place. Um, last week he said it was still in place. Um, so we, um, this, this is where I kind of shift to the yellow, where things seem to be moving very quickly. And, um, you know, we would like to start lifting some additional, uh, protocols that we've had. Um, uh, lifting the hand sanitizing requirement for patrons. I think if we, uh, leave the sanitizers at the door and on the tables, we've done this for flu season during the winter, we kind of put sanitizer out, um, and just let people make their own best choice. Um, because if we're saying it's not transmittable on a material, that means it's not going to be transmittable from hand to material to staff hands, you know, we're assuming people aren't coughing into their hands. I mean, you know, there's lots of, lots of variables, people are, people are people. But we're thinking, you know, for the most part, probably we're okay. Um, you know, uh, and then we're, we're proposing making the mask wearing optional during outdoor summer programs, um, or while our patrons are sitting outside. Um, you know, I mean, I think what I'm seeing and hearing is, you know, outside, um, you're outside. Um, and, you know, if you can't be six feet apart, then maybe you'll mask. I mean, one of the things, and I, that's why I brought her up kind of in the beginning when someone started to mention it about the vaccination, we're, we are being, um, recommended, it's advised, um, by pretty much everybody that we talked to and, and lots of reminders from, um, Primex on webinars I'm on and, and calls and the state library and, you know, just to not make moves based on vaccination status. Um, we are not able to ask, uh, I'm not able to ask staff about a medical condition or vaccination status. I've had patrons come in and tell me, they show me their cards and I'm like, let's get to this business, we're doing a passport, you know? Um, so.
But can I say, can I say something about that, though? I mean, you didn't ask them, I think people want you to feel comfortable. Like, I think that's like, I think that's where it's coming from, is a feeling of like, I want you to feel comfortable that I'm, you know what I mean? So I, I think I totally understand where people are coming from when they do that.
But sometimes, sometimes we have patrons who have come in and, um, are more, are more belligerent, saying, I've been vaccinated. So, so it goes both ways. So, but our, our, our guidelines are, don't determine your opening, your reopening plan based on that. Just let's, you know, look at different metrics, don't look at the metrics, so.
I totally hear you and I really appreciate that you are willing to, or that you guys are recommending the hand sanitizer removal because we do know that that is not going to be one of the ways it's transmitted and to be, um, open to people making that choice for themselves when they're outside, because I think it is more consistent if that we're keeping with the science, but we're still saying when you're inside, it makes sense to wear a mask, then we also have to be with the science that says these things are also okay, right? We want, still want people to be as safe as possible, but we want to be making, um, decisions based on the evidence that we have before us, so, yes.
Right, and, um, it, it's, it's very hard to consider when someone sends a random article or their personal opinion or their personal experience, you know, that's really hard to make a decision on that. You know, we don't usually make decisions like that about the collection or policies. It's really, you know, we try to be a little more, I don't know, inclusive and, and look at other metrics. Um, one of the things that, you know, when I get down to this, uh, big block of yellow, um, it's all the stuff on page two that's kind of influx. Deborah, you still with us?
I am.
Okay.
I am, sorry.
Um, what, what we would like some guidance on is, as things move very fast, here's what, I'm, I'm writing you a list of what we intend, you know, and can, can you give me the authority to say, yes, we can do that? Town council says masks are not required in town buildings anymore and can I, at the same, at the same time that we get this notice from them, just say, okay, staff, let's remove the mask mandate, I'll shoot an email to the board knowing, letting you know that, hey, this notice came down, um, because otherwise it's creating a conflict when a patron comes in, they hear it, and then they come in and we don't have the ruling lifted yet, and then they start to argue with my staff and they're unfortunately very rude about this. Um, and, you know, I.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm really.
We come to the patron court of conduct, but it's also, can we get around this? Can we just not create this drama and this problem for the staff?
It doesn't make sense to me for you to have to call a meeting with us to get approval if the town manager has said the town, what, the rules for town buildings have changed. I think it behooves us to be consistent with what the town is doing because we are part of the town, we are a town building, you know, I know the library trustees, but I think we are better when we are all together and on the same page. It's less confusing and more consistent, so.
So there, there are several things that are gonna come down the pike and we just don't know when they're gonna come down the pike. So I tried to put them in a list, I talked to the department heads, these seem to be the things that we're identifying and it's just, it's a, I don't know when. Um, but we're, we're trying to let you know, here's the goal, this is what we're thinking. And, you know, when, when the social distancing mandate lifts, we can put more chairs, you know, we can open all, all six computers in the adult services area because right now they are covered because of social distancing. You know, there's really things like that where, you know, there's a lot we can lift and there's a lot we can do. But again, it's that, you know, do you want to call an emergency meeting? Do you want to call people on the phone and let me know? I mean, it, it's a little bit up to you, but I, I, it doesn't seem that efficient. Um, so I, I, we want to know.
Yep, so the, the particular items that you're thinking will come up, I'm sorry, I don't have the yellow document in front of me, will be a lifting of the mask mandate in town buildings, a lifting of social, the social distancing mandate in town buildings also, is that what you're thinking?
I will pull it up because.
Okay, thank you.
It's a lot, I, and I, I, it's a lot. I wanna, I've tried to be thorough, but, you know, okay, hang on a second. Okay?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Um, you know, so it's, these are the restrictions that I was talking about, this is the challenge that we're having with some folks. Um, so it's the mask mandate is here, this is social distancing, we'd like to remove the two hour limit, we could provide access to all the computers, we can bring the computers for teens back in because those had to be removed. Um, replace soft seating all through the building, that's all being stored between the lower room and the clump room, there's some stuff in the lower office. Uh, we want to make you aware that children's room might move at a different pace than the adult services and it's, it's because of the vaccination part and that's really challenging because we are also trying to not use that as a metric, but it's kind of there, you know? So it, it is what it is. Um, and then also, you know, removing the plexiglass dividers, that would all loop into. social distancing. This is a, this is a question. I think this is a longer discussion with the board. But at some point, you know, you waived the fines for the year. And at some point, libraries can choose to reinstate their fines, reinstate their fines in a different way or, or just remove them altogether, you know, and this is an opportunity to kind of explore that. You know, we would suggest using this as an opportunity to remove fines from children's and teen materials, obviously a different discussion. You can also discuss, are we going to change the rate of fines, you know, per day for some of these things? And then we, the, the staff wanted some dates and so I had to kind of come up with dates. You know, so end of the summer, August 1st, we return to full hours. You know, um, it's the end of the summer, all the summer programming.
Do you mean September? Do you mean September 1st or August?
No.
August 1st, okay.
I mean, August 1st because it would give us a month to kind of get used to the full hours without this influx of school schedules. Patrons, everyone coming back, you know, potential book sale. I mean, it just, they were comfortable with with the month. And we've looked at the schedules, we've looked at various versions of schedules and scheduling will be fine. You know, we also see this as an opportunity to shift hours. You know, we've had this discussion in previous years of should we go to nine o'clock opening on some days? Should we close earlier on some days because really the library isn't that busy? Should we shift the start of programs in the evening from seven o'clock to six o'clock? I know Max has done that with a lot of adult programming. I, I've only started to do that with mine because our programs, my adult programs were on the old schedule of seven. But children's room says, no, there are some programs that we would need to have that nine o'clock closing. So that's a future discussion, but I want to put it out there. This is stuff that we're thinking about. And certainly we can get you numbers about, you know, this is what it looks like in a budget. We've kicked around a lot during COVID extending the Saturday hours and how useful that might be for, for patrons because Saturdays are even still busy in COVID. So if we just move some of the, some of the Sunday hours to Saturday, you know, and then we just sprinkle the rest of, you know, those two extra Sunday hours somewhere else in the week. So we get that extra long day. But this is something for future, something we're thinking about, but it does tie in with return to full hours. And then the next kind of marker is October 1st, get through September because September's, you know, the start of a lot of things. And then open the meeting rooms. You know, I think a lot of this is hard because we're watching, is there another surge? What happens? Is there another way? So, you know, um, but I, you know, we all know that the goal is to reopen. You know, that's, that's what it is. And the staff, you know, I, we all check in with you, with our staff and say, are you comfortable to step this way? Comfortable to make this step? And they, they are, but at the same time, the department head said, we really need dates to work towards. And that helps them acclimate to, you know, I, I think that's this August 1st reopening with all the hours, a lot of it is the, the re-acclimation of, of the staff to, to the possibility of the space being full for 11 hours. And that's stuff that I am also seeing in other, other, you know, webinars and interviews that I'm at is, you know, reopening, reopen slow. You closed slow and it's, it's going to be challenging for people to adjust mentally and we want to, you know, just in case, let's set it up so that it is a, a slow, careful reopening. But that's, that's kind of where we're at. That's, that's everything that I could think of about reopening.
Um, I guess the only thing that like kind of stands out to me is the the goal to remove Plexiglas dividers. I don't know, I wouldn't be in such a rush to do that, honestly, even if they lift social distancing things. I feel like I've been in some businesses where masks are optional, but they still have the Plexiglas up. I mean, just something for your staff to consider that I don't know that for me, that that's something that has to be a priority at all, you know.
I agree with that.
I added that on the list because it's a COVID thing that we put up. So it normally, we would expect it to come down. But it also ties in in a more complicated, in a different way to the children's room reopening. Because the children's room moved the staff desks to the front so that they could be separate from the public. Kathy would like to move the desks back to where they were. And some of that means taking the Plexiglas down. If they want to put the Plexiglas up in a different spot, we'll cross that bridge later, but it is part of COVID protocols that we put in place
Sure.
are kind of tagged, you know, do we keep this, do we not keep this? One of the other things I've talked to the department heads and they've talked to their staff about is, you know, when the mask mandate is lifted in town buildings, any staff that wants to just wear their mask, take care of it. Any staff that, you know, it's going to be optional for staff and the public. And I think, you know, let's cross that bridge first and then figure out how they feel about the Plexiglas. After their masks are down, I don't know how they're going to feel.
I just didn't want you to feel like that had to be something from my perspective that I thought was like a, a goal. Like there's a lot of other things that, you know, are, are more important and I want people to feel comfortable. Because I, because I do know that, like for me, and I don't know if anyone else has had this, when I did go into a business and there were staff and people like without masks. Now that I'm not happy that we're moving in that direction, but it was odd at first, right? It was like, wait, what, you know, what's going on? Cause it's, it's been for over a year. So we just Where's your mask? Yeah, I was surprised. So, um, anyway, so I, you know, I'm okay with, um, making a motion that Yvette have the authority to move with the, you know, the direction that the town is going in so that when the town council lifts the mask mandate or when social distancing protocols are lifted, that you are able to go ahead and move forward appropriately with the library, just keep us in the loop. I guess that would be my thing I would want to know. This is what we heard and so we're moving forward. So I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts on this. I don't. You've done a great job with all of the processes and procedures and been really thorough. And so I, I have no fear that you will not continue to do that going forward. So does anyone have any thoughts, Janet?
I do. Um, I agree with you with the following the town and like removing the mask mandate and as well as whenever the social distancing gets lifted, go for that. But the, the last, I guess, three, the late for the fines, the August 1st and the August, October 1st. I guess I'd like to revisit that in a month or two.
Is that something we can put in the retreat?
Well, I think that we can have, start our discussion about fines, certainly. But I think that we would want Yvette and her staff to have some time to look at the options for August 1st and come to us because it would have to be with budgeted hours, right? So I think that could be something that we look at for our June or July agenda. Cause I would imagine, Yvette, you would know by then what you guys are, want to do, right? So.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I had asked them to give me schedules for the, for the June meeting.
Okay.
So I can see if they're able to pull that together. Or, or if not, then I'll give you an update of where we are with July, you know, with June and then move on to July. And yeah, these last three things are absolutely future discussions. We can't date fines until you want to.
Yep.
Oh, so that's a board decision. So.
Mike, go ahead.
Will we be keeping the Plexiglas dividers and the signs after COVID? Like stored somewhere?
Libraries get rid of nothing. She'll keep them forever. No.
We probably would keep them forever.
I was thinking it might be good to bring it out for flu season to, you know, add the extra layer of protection.
Yeah. And who knows, you know, what, what the future will hold, right? So we definitely want to hang on to everything and see. So for sure. Okay. Well, I'm going to make a motion then that we authorize Yvette to move in concert with the town regarding the mask mandate and social distancing protocols.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Okay, I vote in favor. Janet?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Soheeney?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep. Just keep us posted, Yvette. Okay?
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you.
I don't know if I need to share them out. I'm just going to keep going.
Okay.
So a couple of things I added in yellow, the Carrie Bean Project. Northern Lights Landscaping will be on site tomorrow morning. I think I sent you a separate email about this. They're going to remove the top steps. A second vendor is going to come in and look underneath the building, but I don't have the date for that. So that's coming. Police will be providing detail, directing traffic around the corner. I don't know if you had questions about the other ones, but I'm, I'm going to go to another yellow update. I think I just mentioned this about the carpet quotes. And that would be the only thing right now we have on the year end expenditure list. And then anything left over, we would encumber into materials. We always do that. And we'll have probably more information as we keep going through the year and finish out in, in June. We talked about this. Um, this was a whole separate conversation. I, the violin in the Library of Things came back damaged. It was tuned or attempted to tune improperly. So I took it to Music and Arts, they repaired it and I have it back. But then you have a cost for repair and we don't have a line in anywhere for a cost of repair. To me, it seems like a replacement, you know, there's something going on with the thing, you know? So that's where I put it. And Janet, you probably saw that in the check. But moving forward, oh, good for you. Give me a high five, virtual five. But I think, you know, moving forward to realize, we need to really think about what does it cost to maintain these collections? One of the other things that I'm working on with Kathy and Samantha down in Children's is she has compiled a list of YouTube videos. And it's, you know, with a QR code that's going to go on all of the instrument tags. And maybe we'll figure out other things that need this, that's, you know, you know, welcome to your instrument. This is how you tune it. You know, because what we realized is people who check out instruments don't own an instrument at home. They're beginners. You know, and, and usually you sit down with, you know, an instructor or someone and says, here's how you tune a guitar. Here's how you tune a violin and so forth. So, so she's working on that with me and we will try to have that available for patrons to kind of not have things come back, you know, incorrectly tuned or an attempt made or something like that. So that's, that's something in the works and something to think about for, you know, the municipal budget. You know, trustee budget, Janet, I have no idea when you work on the budget, but just please earmark that as a thing we need to do. I mentioned
I see Soheeney has her hand. Soheeney, go ahead.
So about the musical instruments, like can we have some insurance against those? So if they have to go for repair, it's covered. And some of these companies, like the music, those who rent out usually, they have, they provide coverage. If you own an instrument, you can provide a musical instrument coverage.
So how we, how the, the instrument collection came about was through a Girl Scout Silver Project. So these instruments were donated. There's, there's no paper trail like that. I, I you know, I personally, I don't have any insurance on the instruments that I own in my house. So I think that would be a different conversation to go out and find, you know, a local insurance company and say, what is the value of, of this collection and insure it? You know, what, what, what we had decided when we first were working with this Girl Scout on this project, you know, we didn't know what kind of instruments we were going to get. She came up with a list and then we got something different, you know, but I said, you know, and we had researched other libraries that have circulating instruments. So we had some advice from other libraries where it works. You know, they said, you know, you need to have someone on staff who knows how to, you know, re-tune a guitar, change strings, that kind of thing. And I do, I know how to do that. But these guitars never came back to me. So I was like, wow. I haven't seen a guitar. I haven't been asked to tune guitar yet. And one of the other staff was actually bringing them home and having someone in their household repair things. So I didn't have, I didn't know about that. So there's no cost. I, I was like, well, we've got to bill someone for hours. This is time and, you know, materials and whatever. So we're, you know, figuring things out, you know, tightening things up. And now it's, no, when an instrument comes back, because with a book, the staff will do a repair in-house. You know, with something like this, it's like, oh, this is different, you know? And depending on the kind of repair, it's going to have, you know, maybe things will have to get sent out and sometimes it can be repaired in-house, you know.
Are you charging the patrons for those things that are broken?
No. That was not in the original policy, you know? That's something we can kind of review now that we've had them for a year. I mean, we really have not had this instrument collection that long. It came in and then we closed. You know, we got a, a whole, a whole bunch of donations to consider right before we closed and I, I can't even consider some of these things.
I think that's, I think that would be something to think about because if I, if my dog eats my book, which has happened, or a disc is cracked from a video game, you know, people are responsible for that also. So you know, it doesn't have to be the whole entire cost, but perhaps we can consider, you know, some sort of repair fee, right?
Yeah.
The repair thing which I was mentioning is like, I'm not sure, like, it's not like the insurance agency, but it's like the, the stores that sell the instruments, they have their own insurance program. So you can buy those for like three months or three years or five years. Basic tunings are covered and basic repairs are covered under those insurances. So once a year, they will tune the instruments and they will tell you, okay, this is in this condition. If you need to do any further work or, you know, you can bring it back, we will do it for less because you have an insurance.
Okay. But are these instruments, we already have instruments in the collection. Are you saying that I would bring this violin to a music store?
Yes.
And buy insurance for it?
Yes.
I don't know how that works. I don't know. Yvette, maybe somebody on staff could just do a, a phone call and find out if that's even something that's worth pursuing.
Check with Music and Arts in Manchester.
I went to
Yeah. He asked them because they deal with all, they deal with the Merrick School District, providing instruments to the schools.
I, I, sure, I know, but this is not, this is an instrument that we own. It's not on their rental program and
No, even I, no, even I own a few, so I can like they have a warranty and after the warranty period, I went and bought the insurance for certain years. So.
It might not be cost effective, right? We would just, you know.
It's like, it's not too much either, kind of.
Okay.
Depending on the instrument, what it is, they have their rates. So you can check into it. For five years, it's like maybe a hundred, a hundred twenty dollars.
Okay. Thanks for the recommendation, Soheeney. I don't know, Yvette, depending on what
Like, just a suggestion. Yeah. Like, you know, because if we are renting, we are like loaning these and they come back damaged, you do not have a library of things.
Right. Okay. So some things for us to consider. And Janet, I'm sure you made a note of that for the budget in the future for the library board of trustees. Okay, awesome. Yvette, is there anything else in your report?
I want to mention that we're all very proud of Arafa Kuski, who is the head of circulation and our executive department head working with me. She graduated with a master's of library science from the University of North Texas. She had a 4.0 GPA. From the University of North Texas, she had a 4.0 GPA. The University of North Texas Program, this is a hybrid program that, there have been a couple of cohorts that have started to come through with graduates in New Hampshire, and they work with Manchester City Library. In a non-COVID year, they would have some coursework, you know, and some in-face, you know, in-person things, where one of the professors comes up, and they, and they've also had things where they go down to Texas. But I, I want to mention this, Arafa has three masters.
Yeah, and I was hoping.
Overeducated person.
And it, you know, a 4.0, and she worked incredibly hard. If you were on the board, you remember looking at the hours the staff put in during stuff, and so to do all that, we really appreciate that, and it is to our benefit to have such a wonderful employee. Is there something that the trustees can do, an acknowledgement of her accomplishment? I'm not, the gift policy, I'm not sure that there's something specifically for this, but.
We could do one of two different things, which is actually what I was just writing down. We could use money from the incentive line, if we wanted to give her something, or we can take it out of special.
Okay.
So, and I think we should do, I think we should do something.
Okay. And what, what would, in, I don't know if anything like this in the past, but do you have a recommendation for what and how much would be?
I, I don't have anything from the past. I'm gonna get to a different screen. I don't know, Karen, do you remember if we've done anything in the past?
No, I, I keep thinking about like a graduation gift, that's, that's what I would, it would be kind of parallel to that. And I don't know that we've ever done that, that I can remember.
All right, Janet, as treasurer, we're all waiting with bated breath to hear what your recommendation is.
Do we want to do something like a flower, something personal to her, like an arrangement? Or something, because.
Or like a gift, you mean, oh, okay.
Well, I was thinking like a gift card or something like that, and then we could, I don't mind picking up like some tulips or something to give to her with it, you know, something like that.
Yeah. There's nine hundred ninety-three dollars in the incentive line.
Okay, so if we did that, that would go into her paycheck, is that correct?
I don't, I think so, I think it does.
Wait, in the past, we've done a memo, I think W. done a memo.
Yeah, the new. That, yes, Mr. Boland would prefer, I think, that our minutes indicate, so it's part of the public record that we voted on something, and then we forward him the minutes, so there's that. Or Janet, you're saying we could do something from special?
Yep.
Yvette, what do you think Arafa would prefer? Would she prefer a gift card someplace?
Well. I already got her from me, from me and my family. A gift card to a salon because she likes facials. Not into the massages, but she likes the face. I don't know. I don't know, we just, you know, I.
You know, if.
Treat herself right now, you know?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay.
It's an acknowledgement from the trustees.
So should we, should we do the incentive pay, and then we'll just get her a nice card also, or something like that?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so would someone like to make a motion for that?
How much?
I, I don't know.
Is this, is this a topic you need to discuss in non-public?
Well, we are going into non-public later on. Okay, why don't we do that, that, let's do that, we'll move that to there. I need to, I need to step away, so what is the, I have a whining dog in the background. So what's, are, do you have other things on your agenda? Or I'm sorry, on your director's report for us to consider?
These were in the original director's report, so you might be familiar with them. G-Milks in April, as an, as a result of our ongoing discussion updating circulation practices to be more consistent, library to library within the consortium, the G-Milks Board voted to recommend that libraries turn on the auto-renewal feature in conjunction with their current loan period. So we're, we're recommending that for Merrimack, we continue with our two-week checkout, and then allow for an item to be automatically renewed twice if there's not a hold request on the item. And then it would be one, two, another, an additional two-week renewal, and then another two-week renewal. So potentially, patrons can have an item out for six weeks. Other libraries have different circulation periods, they might have three weeks, four weeks. So their auto-renewal is gonna be different, but the recommendation is, let's all do this together. When Bedford Library was the first one to just go with auto-renewal a couple of years ago, their dues were compact, it impacted their dues a lot because the dues formula includes circulation, you know, statistics. So we, we decided, it's a goal of the consortium to move to more consortium work, and it's a challenge with, you know, eleven different libraries in New Hampshire towns where they all have different trustee boards and so forth, but it would help with the impact on everyone else's dues if we all moved together. This would mean that whenever you decide to turn fines back on, people won't be fined for late materials in the same way that they would. Because now, you, you, it reaches a due date, it'll automatically renew, and, and you'll get a notice. You know, and then we're kind of doing that for you, and it's very convenient for patrons in other libraries that have already turned this on, patrons love it because it's very convenient. You can still return your book, you know, it, it's just a lot, it's something you don't have to think about in the same way.
Didn't we discuss this last week, last month? I thought we discussed this last month, yeah?
Maybe, but our, our board voted on it.
Okay.
We, G-Milks would like libraries to step forward with this.
I'm just, I thought we did it.
I thought we did vote for this, yeah, I'm going back and looking at the.
Yeah.
Minutes.
And. Yeah.
Yeah, we did, we voted on it under your director's report, that we would turn on the auto-renewal. So, we're good.
So it was voted on in March?
Nope, it was April, April twentieth.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Fabulous, then they will just, okay, that's all good. Okay.
Okay.
And, you know, thank you.
Great, that's good news, okay.
I'm crossing my t's a little too many times.
That's okay, but you know what, and lots of weird stuff with dates and whatnot in the past couple of weeks, so.
We're still following HB 544. That has been attached to the budget, there's still, there's a lot of information in the press about the debate about this bill. And then I did include something in your packet, just that the Greater Merrimack and Beacon Valley Chamber of Commerce is looking for businesses if they want to buy ads in the, in the directory. We will already be listed as a member, so this is just an additional thing if you wanted to consider it. I, I think I included a cost sheet or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, isn't an eighth of a page the smallest we could buy, and that would be several, I can't, I forget.
Three hundreds, three hundred and seventy dollars if we paid it in full.
Right.
Was invoiced, it was four hundred ninety-five. I don't know, do you think this is like a, a way to reach out into the community, or do you think that our efforts could be better spent some other way? Looking for.
We, I'll, I'll just give you some background, we've done it in the past when it was just the membership directory for the, for the Merrimack Chamber.
Okay.
It's a book that goes through, you know, ten or twelve towns, so. It's different.
Okay. All right, well, it looks like the deadline is July second, so why don't people think about it? And we will revisit this in our, at our June meeting, okay? Okay. All right, thank you, Yvette, is there anything else from your?
Where's the end of my report?
The granite sign.
Oh, the granite sign.
Just did everybody reply and say where they wanted it to go?
I, I, I did, I replied, I said either way.
Yeah.
I didn't, I said I want it angled, I don't like it straight on, but that's just me, why did somebody else, what was your thought, Janet?
I, I looked both ways, I'm okay with either way, but I preferred the angle. But it's been brought up several times in your, you've sent emails, and it's like, just tell them where it's going.
Here's the thing, here's the thing, if I make a decision the way I want it, which is angled, by the way, because that was the original placement, and we didn't remember, I didn't remember that, but when I talked to Diane at the garden club, she said, no, no, no. We moved flowers, and it was here, and she walked into it, and I'm like, there you go, that, sure, yeah, we, yep, I get it. So, um, and then we, so we put the two stakes up, but, you know, I just don't want to be in a position where I make a decision and Jared digs holes, and I have someone on the board come back and go.
Well, I think that if it's right, if it's, if it's straight, you can't see it as well from the corner, it just strikes me that we're on a corner, so why wouldn't it be angled? That makes total sense to have it angled.
Yeah, so, but when, when we, it, it has been a long project, but when we finally came back around to, okay, okay, we're ready to dig, then it was like, oh, no, I rem, you know, someone said I remember it as centered, I was like, I don't know, and Jared and I were out there going, who, what do you remember, and he's like, oh, no, it was over here, and it was like, that's not even on the table, what are you? Come on, man, you know, so.
Well, I like, I said angled, Karen said she doesn't have a preference, Janet.
Angle, say angle.
Janet, what's your preference?
My, mine was angled, it's, I mean.
Mike, do you have any strong feelings about the sign?
No.
Okay.
And we had string, and we were like, you know, I like the tangent line to this curve, and so we had all these things going on, and I was like, seriously? So it ended up being angled, though.
Yeah.
So they are working on getting, securing all their permits. You know, and communicating with DigSafe and Merrimack Water and Highway, DPW Police Detail, because probably the truck is gonna sit on the corner again, because it can, we talked about this, I talked about this with the vendor before. The truck can't sit in the parking lot and reach the crane. It's, it's too long. So, I'm just waiting for, and they're gonna give me the date, the day before, and then I'll shoot. Maybe I'll say, it's half. Because that's how police detail, that's how some of it works, it's when, when the police say we can do the detail, then it's.
Okay, angle is fine.
Yay, thank you.
Okay. All right, awesome.
Okay.
Okay. Um, acceptance of, I'm sorry, treasurer's report, sorry, Janet, treasurer's report.
Actually, I haven't, have you gotten the bill from Swenson? Or are they gonna give it once they install it?
I kind of thought we've, I'll look, I don't know.
Okay.
That's, wow, I don't know, I'll find out.
Okay.
Okay, treasurer's report.
Okay, first, let's move to the balance sheet, if you've got it.
Want to be the host, you want to share your screen?
No. Because it's just a couple of numbers. All right. So we have the balance sheet. There it is, no. There we go. Okay, this is for the month of April. Fines started with a balance of seven thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars and sixteen cents, and it ended with seven thousand nineteen dollars and forty cents. Then special started with fifty-two thousand three hundred sixty-seven thirty-nine cents, and it ended with with twenty-two thousand six hundred seventy-two, excuse me, twenty-seven, so twenty-two thousand six hundred twenty-seven and twenty-six cents. There's a lot of twos in there, so twenty-two, six, two, seven, twenty-six cents. In special, I, just because, I don't know, well, the beginning balance being over fifty thousand, at the end of March, the Watson account got deposited into special. On the first or second of, on the first, on the first of April, which was the day later, so it's hence it's in April, the bunny got put into special savings. So it got removed out of special checking and went to special savings. So there's thirty thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars and seven cents that is in, currently sitting in the special account savings. So we can figure out what to, where to put it, what do we want to do with it? Actually, we were gonna move it to fidelity, which is the one thing I didn't do last month, so I will move that based off of what we voted on last month. So, hence the large change in amount. The other thing that I wanted to highlight to you is the Quimby money. The Quimby money that, it was under Quimby Memorial Savings Account, was at thirty thousand five hundred and eight dollars and six cents. That, there was a check made, and it went to the trustees of the trust fund, and it has since been deposited. I sent you the email that I received from Chris Christensen that says, with the memo, that says he sent it off to Cambridge Trust to be deposited, and how it was going to be allocated. The other thing that I need voted on is, I need to sell the Quimby money out of fidelity. So I sell it, and then I get a check from fidelity addressed to Merrimack, Town of Merrimack, trustees of the trust fund, and the money will go, will go to them, so that's one thing. But at the meet, I attended a trustee of the trust fund meeting, and they wanted to know if we wanted to take any proceeds from the fidelity money, if we wanted to use it before we took the lump sum and gave it to the trustees of the trust fund. Essentially, the idea was like taking a trust fund disbursement. So did we want to use any of the money, even if it's a thousand dollars? So I checked yesterday, it was around eleven thousand something, the original deposit was ten thousand. I didn't know if the board wanted to use any of that, any of the gains towards what Dr. Quimby put in his trust, which was children's room authors, furniture, promote library usage and resource circulation, and then changes in services and programs, those were the four items that he had. The Watson money is gonna be going towards twenty-one, yeah, twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. So I didn't know how the board felt if we wanted to take, like, the thousand dollars and change, and and put it towards one of these areas that Dr. Quimby wanted in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. And then we can actually also tell him what we used it on, just to give him an idea.
And is, is there thought that it is a, it's just easier to do it that way, rather than to invest it with them and then take the money out?
Okay, so the way that, and that was actually Tom Boland brought it up, he was like, is there any gains or there's any? Because nothing was decided if it was gonna be principal or income, he was like, why doesn't the board decide if they want to take some money before we give them the remainder? we give them the remainder? Because, because it's easier essentially. And we wouldn't be able to get the money until next July. So July of 2022. So, so I said, you know what? That's a good idea. I will bring it to the board. And that's where we are.
Okay. Well, that's a great recommendation and I'm sure that we can easily find some way to promote library services or do programming.
Yeah.
Yvette, do you have any thoughts on this or things that I'm sure that the staff could find some wonderful way to use this?
Yeah, I think if we, if we put it out to the staff, we'll come up with something.
Okay.
Okay.
It'd be nice to give Dr. Quimby like an immediate recognition of something that we were able to do.
Exactly. So especially considering that the trust took so long to establish. I think, I think I'm going to take the 10 and give it to the, well, my recommendation is the 10 give to the trustees of the trust fund and whatever's the remainder, take that for the board, for the library and then let Yvette and staff figure out where they want to spend it.
So it sounds to me like you need two motions. You need a motion from us authorizing you to sell the Quimby stock.
Yep.
Okay, that's the first part. And then we also would need to make a motion to give $10,000 of the proceeds to the trustees of the trust fund and retain the remainder for the purposes of Dr. Quimby's directions. Mike?
I don't really know what the trustees of the trust fund are. Are we giving away the money?
No, the trustees of the trust fund manage trusts for the town. So they are just going to be the agent that manages our investments with Cambridge Trust. The money is still for the benefit of the library and to be used at the direction of the Library Board of Trustees. But this way, we're not managing those particular funds. The trustees of the trust funds are managing them for the library.
Okay.
Did I describe that correctly, Janet? Is there anything?
Yes, you did. The only thing I was going to add is the trustees of the trust fund already manage, well, like for six, six different trusts, they've combined them though. So it's kind of like two, because they've combined everything. But they manage those trusts and they, when the trust, when the money came to the town, it was said, or the donor would say, here's $500 in, to the town to benefit the library. And they might stipulate, it's for the children's room, it's for adult fiction, it's for, it's for the benefit of the library. It's to sustain the library, whatever the wording they used. And these date back to like 1918, some of these trusts. And, and the trustees of the trust fund manage those funds. They manage.
As well as other trust funds for the town.
They do the school, they do the library, they do the cemetery, they do fire. They, there's, they have all the money. It's almost, I think it's like $6 million that they manage. So.
So we felt that, you know, it's part of this trust that it made sense for them to manage that rather than have the trustees, because we would be starting from scratch where they're already doing all of that. So.
Right. So this past, oh goodness, February, we finally received a trust and we were working with Dr. Quimby and his lawyer. We finally got a trust that we agreed on, that everything worked, everything. All his desires and wishes were laid out and they were finalized. And for his, for that income that would be, we would receive, he stipulated four different areas. He didn't stipulate a percentage, he just stipulated that the areas and those areas were the children's room or children's authors, furniture, promote library usage and resource circulation and changes in services and programs. And that's laid out in his trust. So, so back to the motion. So yes, I need two different motions. So I need the motion to authorize me to sell the stock.
I'll make it, go ahead, Janet.
I'd like to make a motion to, for the board to authorize me to sell the Middlesex water stock from, out of, out of Fidelity.
Wasn't that already done last meeting?
No, Janet was going to find out from Chris Christensen the proper way to do it because we weren't sure what the procedure was that the trustees of the trust fund wanted. So. Okay, I'll second your motion, Janet. Is there any discussion or further questions? Okay, I'll vote in favor. Janet?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Karen?
Yes.
And Soheeney?
Yes.
Thank you. 5001, just thinking, we meet in person, we don't have to do roll call votes, so that will be lovely. Okay. And then, did you want to make the second motion, Janet?
Yes, I would like to recommend that $10,000 of the sale, of the sale go to the trustees of the trust fund and the remainder to the library.
Okay.
In, well, in, to follow Dr. Quimby's recommendations in his trust.
Okay. And Soheeney seconded that? Any discussion? Okay, I will vote in favor. Janet?
Yes, please.
Soheeney?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yeah.
Thank you. And this is, thank you. And this is just one of the great things about working with the trustees of the trust fund on this is that they had this recommendation, which might not have been something that we were even aware of. So this worked out perfectly. Wonderful. Great. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Was that it? That's that. Yvette, do you know? Have you received, I mean, it's only, well, I guess it's May. Have you received any guidance from the finance department of, around how much would be in the remainder? I didn't know if you would know by now. The remainder from the budget?
No, because we had, I think the last time we asked, we had a number and we've been spending. So you know, I can find out, you know.
Okay.
I mean, basically whatever it is, is earmarked for carpet.
Right.
Carpet and materials, but I mean, sure, he's, because this is, now we start having the conversation with finance saying, okay, you've got this much, this much. And then, and then I come to you with the year-end expenditures. And it's like, okay, here's how we're thinking it's going to allocate and we're starting, but yeah.
My other question, or when I was thinking about it was, and it might be too soon considering we did a batch last year, but it was computers. I know you like doing them on a rotation. And like I said, I don't, I know we did some for this year, or maybe it's going into, yeah, it's this year. I just didn't know if it's too close. So that was just my suggestion.
All right, I'll ask. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. Oh, and I have one more thing. Non-resident fees, we moved to special. So I need, I'd like to make a motion to move the $200 that got deposited into fines that was non-resident fees to move it to special. I second.
Okay, so there's a motion to move non-resident fees from fines to special $200. Any discussion? So just Mike, I don't know if you know that, so obviously public libraries are very localized, but you can as a non-resident buy a card. And so is our fee $50? Is that?
$100.
$100. So you can see I have not been up on this for a while. So $100. So yeah, so people do, people from other communities, which is wonderful. So, okay, I'll vote in favor. Janet?
Yes.
Soheeney?
Yes.
Karen? And Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. I'm done.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the acceptance of minutes, which I apologize, it took me a little longer than anticipated to get them to you. I was busy that particular week. So at any rate, I would like to say that I already noticed that I wrote Chris with a T. So I will make that correction under review of April action items. And you'll know on the front page of the April 20th, 2021 minute, Janet Krupp seconded is in red because I was not 100% sure that was correct. And I went back and watched the video and that part was not on the video. So I was assuming you were a seconding me, Janet, but I'm not 100% sure. So that's why that was not fully noted. So I did not have it on my minutes. Were there any other corrections or things of note? The video was very helpful to go back and watch. So thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to accept the minutes and I can make the changes, the spelling change and anything else?
I did second your agenda.
Okay, so then I will make that in black and I will and sec, and take care of my spelling. Any other changes or comments? Okay, so I'll make a motion that we accept the public meeting minutes from April 20th, 2021.
I'll second.
And I will vote in favor. Mike?
Yeah.
Karen?
Yes.
Soheeney?
Yes.
And Janet?
Yes.
Okay, great. Committee updates. Nothing for the Building Exploratory Committee. I went to the Friends meeting on Monday via Zoom with Yvette. One of the things that Yvette mentioned in her report, but I'll just talk about also is that the Friends of the library have decided to extend membership to September with the anticipation that there will be a book sale of some sort in September and that they will have their annual meeting then and do their elections at that time, too. So.
Are they starting to take donations? No. Okay.
Okay. And Merrimack Public Library Development Fund Committee. Nothing from them. I didn't go to that meeting yet. That was the Monday I was in New York. So was there anything from that meeting?
I don't, I don't have the minutes.
Okay.
I know they're meeting, they're, they would like me to pick a meeting year, arrange for a meeting date over the summer. You know, bricks are ready to be installed. We've, we've talked about that over a couple of meetings and no.
Okay. And Town Center, Karen, anything from the Town Center Committee?
They're, they're very active and involved with the 275th anniversary. And things are moving along, but as relates to the library, there isn't much of anything specific.
Okay, thank you. There's been, I don't believe any of the Library Board of Trustees committees have met for reviewing May's action items. I have that I will send you an email regarding the upcoming retreat to ask for your agenda items. I will also reach out to Jason and see what dates work best for him and then email you all to try to set up a time for us to meet in person with Jason in June. We also are going to consider the ad possibly on our June agenda. And there, Janet is going to move the $30,000 from special savings to Fidelity. And then Janet's other action items to sell the Quimby stock and to move the 200 from special. Is there any, are there any other action items? Okay, then seeing none, I would like to make a motion that we go into our non-public session as per 91A32E. And I believe we also said that we are going to be discussing things that would fall under 91A32A. So we do need to make, or take a roll call vote to go into non-public. So I will vote in favor. I'm sorry, I believe I need a second for the motion to move into those. Thank you, Soheeney. So I'll vote in favor of going into non-public. Janet?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
And Soheeney?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So I believe the recording shall stop.